It it's just my desk. We didn't want to. People. And. I think it's. I. Three six but they um. They do the.
Daniel, do we want to add the uh Mills River Partnership? One game or you can do that one?
I'm gonna do it.
Oh, yes. All right.
Hey, so before we get started, I guess everybody can see that I am not Mayor Guntz and he's feeling a little a little puny tonight, so we're going to try to stumble through this and just please bear with me, so. We'll go ahead and call this meeting of Town Council to order and join me as we say the play.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
And I hear a motion to approve the agenda with Sue's recommendation that we add items C.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the added item.
Thanks, Sandra.
I'll second that motion.
Jeff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh opposed? Any announcements? Do we have any public comment?
I did receive two public comments by email that I believe council was copied on and they were asked us to read them in the council meeting and the planning board meeting, so you'll bear with me, I'll read these aloud, not that. The first one comes from Betty Dorn, it was addressed to all of the council members and the planning board members as well as myself. This email is to address the comments Jeff Young said about the chair of the planning board, Sherry Hill at the last council meeting. Having watched most of the planning board meetings over the past two and a half years, I was shocked to hear Mr. Young's words about Sherry Hill. I have never witnessed the type of behavior he was referring to, so giving Mr. Young the benefit of the doubt, I circled back to watch the last two planning board meetings again before I drafted this email. After reviewing, I can honestly say that I heard nothing inappropriate with Sherry Hill's responses nor her tone of voice. She exhibited the same professional behavior she always does and quite seamlessly followed the decorum such responsibility demands. The only section to which I can only surmise Mr. Young was referring was in the October meeting. In the manner that she always does, when she has personal opinions, she stated her frustration in an undeniably professional manner and then moved on to do the business at hand, which was to revisit text amendments regarding food trucks and parks for the request of the council. Not once was she dismissive or disparaging of the council. She was not using her position to poison the well before any discussion happened, as Mr. Young stated at the council meeting. Mr. Young says she was trying to influence the planning board and that her opinions get the best of her and she was using the microphone to take things that shouldn't. What Mr. Young has said about Miss Mrs. Hill's conduct during the planning board meeting is simply not true and can easily be witnessed through the public domain videos on the internet. Before the final vote, Mr. Young, an appointed council member, stated, "We are in the business of politics. If Mr. Young is only interested in the game of politics and not the true meaning of politics, activities of the governance of a town, as a taxpayer, I can state emphatically that I do not appreciate Mr. Young playing games when the future of Mills River is at stake. Sincerely, Betty Dorn, fifty-six East Chippendale Drive." Sorry, my voice, I'm losing my voice in here. Alright, the second one is from Susan Susan Cunningham, addressed to all of the council members and Sherry Hill and myself. After listening to the past four years of planning board, board of adjustments and town council meetings, I have to say that last night's vote to renew Sherry Hill's appointment to the planning committee was one of the most irresponsible decisions to date. She has been a phenomenal, knowledgeable leader and committee member. You will be very hard pressed to find another person to fill her shoes and the town of Mills River will pay dearly for this decision. Midday Thursday, I was passing by the once projected food truck site. There seemed to be a meeting of four or five men. I travel that route once or twice a day and have never seen people there. Coincidence? Maybe, or maybe not, considering the conversation last night that led to that pivotal and in my mind ill-advised assignment vote. Sounds to me like council is basing their leadership on ego rather than what is good for our town. Susan Cunningham. Jim, did anyone sign up?
Okay, thanks, Sue. So moving on to the next item is the consent agenda. The motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Sandra. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, moving on to the regular agenda. Sue. Um A is the public hearing for food trucks and food parks, so. What we'll need is a somebody to make a motion to go into uh enter into the public hearing. So is there anybody who want to make a motion?
I'll move that we enter into public hearing for a text amendment, T X D twenty-two dash oh three.
Jeff, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Sandra. All those in favor? Uh opposed? Okay, so I got a cheap seat here, so. Uh I need to ask if there's anybody here with a conflict of interest. And how would I word this, Sue, a conflict of interest in food trucks or food parks?
Um you can't you can't just say a conflict of interest, it's it would if you were looking at it, it would be possible that maybe someone was planning to put a food truck park in or had a family that was doing so so that that's the what you'd be looking for.
Okay, so that's my question, if there's anybody with a conflict, you know, speak up. And hearing none, so. So I guess I'll go to the next one, it'll be, I guess we'll ask Michael to present. Is that right, Michael, you're doing it or Daniel did?
I'll give you a quick introduction and then we'll we'll hand it over to Mr. Palacek. So in front of you this evening, you've got a public hearing scheduled for a food truck and food park ordinance amendment. This came out of your visioning session last year. Um and I'll hand it over to Mike to give you the overview of the staff report and answer any questions you might have.
Good evening, everyone. Um so this, as a town manager said, started with the visioning session and last year, um we took the text amendment to the planning board in October and then they tabled the item to November, so they could consider the uh item and consider adding some additional text to the text amendment. Um before I go any further, this public hearing has been properly noticed, we had a published notice in the lightning on January eleventh and eighteenth. So a little background, so currently a food park is designed is defined as a designated area where two to eight food trucks or temporary vendors may park and vend. Um food parks should only be permitted as a principal commercial use of property, which means they have to be located on property without an established principal use. So a food park triggers additional development requirements and as the ordinance states, they're currently defined as one, permanent restrooms and hand washing facilities on site, two, a minimum of two tables provided per temporary vendor, three, one common sign, four, a minimum of four parking spaces per temporary vendor, and then five sites and structures must meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And that's actually one of the more burdensome requirements for some of these smaller properties, um because that uh brings commercial building setbacks into play, landscaping requirements, dumpster screening, etc. Basically, any commercial site standard in our zoning code is applied to a food park because it's a commercial principal use for a property. So again, uh at the visioning session last year, council directed staff to basically modify the definition uh from the food park from two to eight food trucks to be three to eight. And that's what we've done in the text amendment language here before you tonight. So in uh section one-one-one point oh oh three A, which was the first red line part of the packet, um we changed that language to reach to read three to eight food trucks or trailers versus two to eight. So just changing the definition of a food park from three to eight versus two to eight. And then I also added language in section one-one-one point zero zero six, just to clarify for future staff even the food park can only be permitted as a principal use of property. Um and that food trucks can be permitted as an accessory use for an existing commercial property. And then finally, the planning board uh in their second meeting in November requested uh staff add language regarding permanent restrooms and hand washing facilities and the question came up is how is that defined? And the answer I gave them is that if there's no ordinance definition, that's up to staff interpretation. And they wanted to make sure permanent restrooms and hand washing facilities meant that it be within a permanent structure. And so that was language that they added and is in the version before you tonight. So a brief policy analysis analysis, so allowing up to food truck, two food trucks as an accessory use to an existing commercial property removes the food park development requirements that can be burdensome for a small commercial property or business owner. Those requirements are meant to be applied to a food park, again establishing itself as a new commercial use or new commercial site, uh but not to existing commercial properties hosting one or two food trucks, that's the accessory, commercial accessory use. So if this change implemented, it would allow more food trucks on existing commercial properties in town and then also supports the local food economy and local food options for residents. And then one thing I wanted to highlight that I also highlighted for the planning board is anytime staff permits a food truck, whether it be one or two or one as an accessory use or um not for a food park, sorry, one or two food trucks per property. We basically make sure the site can still function for its principal use. Um so if a site has, I don't know, a retail business on it, but the site is so small that the food truck would take up required parking or is partially blocking ingress and egress, that would be something we would not permit because again, even just one food truck would diminish the functionality and safety of that existing site. So that is something that's part of the review process and that's in one-one-one point oh oh five H. And it states vendor operations as an accessory use shall not impede or otherwise compromise vehicle access, pedestrian access or parking arrangements for the principal use. Um so again, if that is detrimental to the principal use, staff would not permit it. Uh that's the summary of the changes before you tonight, so the planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval at their November first meeting and found it to be consistent with the making Mills River plan specifically object objective one point four and objective three point six and then the specific policies um are in your packet as well. So the uh vendor ordinance, as it is before you tonight, is attachment A. We have the planning board statement of consistency and recommendation as attachment B. And then with all text amendments or zoning changes, uh the governing board or council has to adopt its own statement of consistency and that draft uh statement is included as attachment C. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody have questions?
Oh, if one of the businesses around here that has like food truck day, would they still be able to have that or is it going to be limited to two?
They would still be able to have that, um there's a section in the code that allows you to have more food trucks as a special event. It's actually under one-one-one point oh oh six A three and states a special event not to exceed uh seventy-two hours. You can have that four times a year on a specific property.
Okay.
So that would be permitted.
Anything else from Michael? So I have a couple of questions, Michael. What do you define as a food truck or trailer? So I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but what is your definition of a food truck, okay?
If we're talking about a trailer, it's something you know with wheels and axles that's usually being towed behind. And then obviously a food truck is something that you know can move on its own accord. But again, the the temporary vendor ordinance basically considers any temporary vendor, no matter how they're located and and what type of, structure is the wrong word, but vehicle or tow behind.
Okay, so hypothetical question here, so a business here in Townville River has uh currently has four what I would consider separate food trucks or trailers on site, but it's not the primary business. Would that be allowed?
As it's written now, no.
So I guess my definite, I guess why I was asking for definition, so. I'm just gonna tell you, so it's Mills River Brewery. So they have multiple what I would consider different units there. Would you agree?
Yeah, there there are multiple trailers under that awning they have.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So how would you how would you approach that if we pass this ordinance as it's written here?
Yeah, that is hard because you are putting me on the spot to give an interpretation on the fly. Um well, I'd have to look into that more, to be honest, but I it's been brought up to me multiple times. Um it's an interesting case because although there are multiple trailers, it's for the same food establishment.
Right, I understand that, but the way this is written doesn't really leave. It says individual unit, it says units. And.
No, you're right, so uh and then if I just pull straight from the definitions, a food trailer, a mobile food business unit that can be hitched and towed by a vehicle, so unit you think of one trailer and a food truck, a mobile vehicle supporting a food business. Now you could I guess you, if we're thinking outside of the box, I guess you could consider that specific example a temporary vendor site where just an individual or business, as it states here in definitions, is operating under a temporary vendor permit. So I I guess I'm saying there's nothing in the ordinance that says you can't to be a temporary vendor, you don't have to have a food truck or trailer. You're just not in a permanent structure.
Right. But it also says more than three. You have to be a food park and that can't be your primary business.
That's correct. For for.
Or it can be your primary business, but their primary business is not the food trucks.
Correct.
I'm just, I'm a little bit worried about down the road in the future for if some something else like this comes up about how this is worded here. Just thoughts.
There is, I don't I didn't have on the code before me tonight, but there there is um a provision in the zoning code for that property because I believe it's zoned light industrial, light industrial. And I'm talking on the fly pulling this out of my head, but it does allow customary accessory uses, which I believe includes food establishments, but I would have to double check on that and report back to you.
Okay.
Something else that may differentiate Mills River Brewing from a traditional, or at least what we envision a food truck is that if you patronize their establishment, you buy the food through Mills River Brewing, you know, you get just one bill for beverages and food and it's it's almost like a contractor to their business, it's not a separate business or a temporary business, it's it's there, so. Uh while I agree, I don't want to um adopt anything that puts anybody in harm's way, especially if they're already established and I don't think it's the intent of this ordinance to try to sweep up operations like uh Mills River Brewing, but nonetheless, I do believe that if push came to shove, they don't quite fall under a definition of a of a food truck because it's a semi or totally permanent and then it's not a temporary vendor, it's actually Mills River Brewing that is actually selling the food, serving food and taking payment.
Okay, is there anybody else, questions, comments?
Some of it's mobile, like it has wheels.
Hmm.
It's irrelevant. Needs to have wheels on it or?
No, it does not have to have wheels and again, it's based on what the ordinance defines, which it doesn't go into that level of detail. Now again, there's the specific definitions for food trailer and and food truck, which refers to something that can be towed behind. So obviously that would include wheels, but this is our, you know, it's not our food truck ordinance, it's our temporary vendor ordinance. So in theory, you could be operating a business out of, I can't think of an example, but some other non-permanent structure or something temporary on site. And as long as you've got a temporary vendor permit, you would be allowed to operate within the confines of the number of units per site. But the the main answer is it's not defined in the code.
Okay, so I just will move along a little bit here. So is there any public comment on this? Particular item? Hearing none? I think anytime, I have reservations about passing this the way it's written here for the for future uh considerations of other businesses. Uh but that's just me. I think anytime we make adjustments to our ordinances, I think it would be a good idea if all voting members or council are here. So if it's okay with y'all, I'd like to continue this. Is that the right term, Sue? Continue it to a to another week?
You you can use the word continue. Um are you wanting to close your your actual public hearing and just delay the vote or are you wanting to give more opportunities for public comment?
I feel like for uh transparency transparency uh that we should leave it open and maybe take comment even at the whenever we take it up again.
Okay, so then you continue or you recess and you tell us when you want to 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 have it heard.
All right. And is is that something y'all are agreeable with? Yep. Okay. Uh do you have a date in mind, Sue, that you have counting?
Uh the next meeting is February ninth.
Would you need that in a in a motion?
Yes, we need a motion to um recess this public hearing to February ninth at six thirty. And then we would put it first on the agenda.
Thank you, James. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Sandra. All in favor?
Aye.
P. So we'll move along to our next item, which will be our calendar event for vision. So Daniel, would you want to speak to this?
Yes, sir, in one moment, just track down my notes. So um before you this evening, we've got a just a brief overview of the visioning session that uh we're recommending be scheduled for March the ninth, which is your regular meeting date uh in March and asking that it be moved up as five thirty P M. Um we've adjusted this a little bit every year, we're trying to find the best way to do it. Um so what I'm thinking this year is you have your regular meeting on the on the ninth. Uh we'll try to limit regular agenda items if we can. And then we can start the budget discussion that night with some of our presentations that you see every year. And then we would we would reconvene the next morning at nine A M. Um and stay probably till mid afternoon, uh depending upon how quickly we move through conversation to to finish up those presentations and then have uh of course conversation brainstorming uh on the afternoon of that Friday. So I don't, excuse me, I don't have anything to report in terms of agenda items at this point. Um but I just wanted to go ahead and get this on the calendar if it's agreeable to the board.
So does anybody have a problem with that? I spoke with Shannon earlier today and he he didn't have a problem with the uh schedule of that, so. It's up to y'all, we'll we'll do the whole thing.
I'll make a motion that we uh go forward with the staff recommendation for a budget visioning, uh starting on the ninth and ending on the tenth.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second? Thank you, James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to Adam C.
Okay, um you have in front of you the quarterly dashboard through December thirty-first. Um we are very fortunate. Uh revenues for the second quarter are very strong, um sales tax and utility sales tax are higher than projected again. Um permit and fees revenues are above your budget because activity has not slowed. Um and interest on investments is significantly over budget because of the increased interest rates that no one foresaw. The the use of Mills River Park and its amenities is reflected in revenues at seventy-five percent of the budget at the end of two quarters. Uh everyone loves your park. Um expenditures are either at or below expected levels for mid-year. Um your fund balance commitments have not changed, um we've not well, you know, you've not you've not made further commitments yet. Um your cash distributions is still very heavily at um North Carolina Capital Management Trust, they're paying us four point two percent and it's completely liquid being added next day. Um banks are not paying anywhere near that. Um I do have one C D still and it's at four and a half percent, but it's a significant outlier from all the other banks. So um we'll see how long we keep that there. Um any questions? That was a very quick overview.
More questions or so? Hearing none? Thanks, Sue. So we'll move on to staff updates. I guess you just gave your updates, is that right or you got something else?
I actually have one more thing, we we do try to keep separate reports from staff updates. Um just a reminder that we still have an opening on the Board of Adjustment. We've received no new applications at all, um it's being advertised on your website, it comes up every month in your update. Um at this point, I'm encouraging both committee members and council, talk to your constituents. This is not a popular board, everyone's a little Talk to your constituents. This is not a popular board. Everyone's a little afraid of it because it's a little more technical. But a couple of you have sat on the board, you know that it's, it's certainly doable. Um, so. If you would talk things up, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Maybe beat the bushes and try to get somebody to apply for that. So. Moving on to Michael.
So I don't know if anyone saw the caterpillar equipment on Jeffers Road, but the town homes have broken ground out there. Um, they're really just started earthwork and installing sediment erosion control devices, but I did have a conversation with. One of the principal developers today and he said, the more active construction uh, with filled dirt, more equipment should be beginning in the next two to three weeks. Um, so the, the site is an active site currently, but activity will pick up significantly. Uh, within this month or within the next month. Um, the town manager and I were at the groundbreaking for the Asheville Airport Air Traffic Control Tower and Terminal Radar Approach Facility. And I just wanted to notify the board. I talked to their planning manager and we do expect to receive the zoning permit for that within the next week. Um, so that's coming uh, on our desk soon. Um, I've also received a zoning permit. For the phase two build out of Summit Self-Storage um, at uh, Old Haywood Road and Boylston Highway. Um, we've had some complaints from neighboring residents about lighting uh, shining into, into their properties. And so um, I'm working with the developer to come up with a solution to that, both through uh, additional landscaping being installed. And putting some shielding on the lights on those sides of the building. Uh, so hopefully that will be amenable to everyone and um, their zoning permit will be processed. I think there's. Four or five additional buildings at the back of the site they're adding. Um, Kevin, our new planning technician and I did the final zoning inspection for Appalachian Mountain Brewery about a week ago. Um, I talked to their owners and they're expecting to try and open later this spring, maybe end of March. Uh, but obviously with construction, those dates uh, are always flexible. Uh, but we'll look forward to welcoming, the, welcoming, welcoming them to the community then. And then I did want to let you know that the final plat for the subdivision, Roper Farm subdivision on Banner Farm Road was approved recently. And we just got our first zoning permits for home construction there. So all they've, although they've already been active in the area, building some homes across the street at the eight lot minor subdivision. On the other side of Banner Farm Road, you can expect to see additional construction activity at that site as well. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thanks, Michael. And Daniel.
Sure. Mike, we need to touch on the Smart Gov update, please, before I jump in.
So uh, we did a week-long training with uh, the Smart Gov permitting and code enforcement software, which went very well. Um, obviously diving deep into it, there are some additional technical glitches and things that need to be customized still. So basically we're working with our consultants and they've moved, since we're at the end of the project, they've moved us up the priority list to get these last items cleared out. Get everything in shipshape for us and uh, we are hoping to go live with them by the end of the month. So the software will be in its mostly final live form for staff to practice with. And then at a later date, we will make an announcement to the public, make sure the links are on the website and that everything is integrated. Um, but we are in the final stages of that and it's a powerful tool. We'll allow everything from uh, code enforcement complaints to be submitted. Through a public portal that will automatically go into our software from online permit submittals uh, with credit card payments online. Um, and then also we'll still accept paper applications, paper complaint forms. But in-house staff will be entering all that information into the software, so it'll be much more efficient, uh, less paper, uh, less waste. Yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Uh, just a couple of other things to add, uh, along the lines of new software, our Civic Rec platform. Uh, is very nearly uh, hundred percent live. We are using it now for shelter reservations. We've not released anything yet. To the public in terms of programming. I've got some work to do yet on that, but it's, it's nearing the final stages as well. Uh, regarding parks and recreation, we have partnered with Mills North River Farms this year to help out with Mills River Day. Uh, so if you know anyone uh, who is interested, we're also uh, supporting uh, sponsorships. Uh, send them our way, send them to Nicole um, to coordinate that. Um, the last thing I want to mention is we, we did the uh, completed one of our capital group projects this week. We had new furniture installed in the conference room. So Kevin has a new, new, new place to work now. We've got a couple of cubicles set up, got a new conference table. Uh, it's very nice. Thank you for your support on that, making that happen. Uh, we kind of were outgrowing the space that we had, so we've, we've rehabbed it and it's very nice now. And that's all that I have.
Daniel, that Smart Gov software has been a big, that's been a big project. Place, haven't it?
It has.
Can you touch on that, how long it's taken and?
Sure. We originally signed the contract, I believe in twenty twenty-one. Um, and so prior to Mike even uh, coming here, we were working on that. Um, and then they were, they were bought out by a company right around the time Mike got here. So we kinda had to. We got transferred to a new project manager and we're working on it for several months, then they were bought out again. Um, we're on their, their fourth. Company now. Same company, but they've been bought out several times. And so there's been some delays in terms of project management as they, as they shuffle through staff. Um, but the good thing is it's the same system that the county is using. So people are already using it, the county law building permitting and plug plane permitting and all the things that are associated with county permitting. Mike has been using that on our end to enter permits, so it's, it's out there. The public is getting used to it. Um, in these last couple of months, I've really been fine tuning it um, for our purposes. And like Mike said, we had the training uh, last week and since then, we've been using the training site of it. Um, to practice on and, and test and run different scenarios. And are finding uh, little, little tweaks and quirks that need to be fixed, but that's, that's the, the last step before we push it out to the public. So we're getting there.
Hey, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
So is there any council comments?
If I may interject, since we're uh, touched on subject to budget visioning, uh. Last year, obviously it was my first budget cycle on town council and so I was learning a lot. And uh, in a conversation I had with town manager regarding the fire department was uh. I wanted to see the contract and then also uh, learned from Daniel that. Uh, part of that contract is they're supposed to pro- present us with a budget, proposed budget, just like sheriff's department does, but we've not received one of those. I find it important that uh, we do that and kind of hold them same standard that we do the fire, I mean, excuse me, the sheriff's department, so. Uh, I'd like for the staff to reach out uh, to the chief Livingston or the appropriate board member. To remind them of that obligation and the expectation, or I guess maybe I'm asking the council. Uh, is it? Uh, is it also an expectation of yours to have them give us a proposed budget as spelled out in the contract that we have with them? I just want to give them plenty of notice because apparently they've not done so, I guess, in a matter of years. Uh. So I don't know what they have, but I don't want to catch them flat-footed because in the contract it stated that it's supposed to be presented to us in the month of April. So uh, I really like. For town manager at least have the uh, knowledge that it's a. It's the desire of this board and not just one council member. Um, that we ask for that obligation to be met with regards to a proposed budget. Or if we need to make it a agenda item and take it up as a formal matter, but uh, seeing that's already in an assigned. Or it's already in the contract, it's been approved by both parties. It's really nothing new. It's just asking for uh, what's already been agreed to.
So Daniel, do you, do you reach out for that? Have you reached out for that last year or anything?
I've not reached out yet this year. It was all my listed things to do this week, actually. I reached out to the chief about uh, something else and was gonna handle this separately, but I will make sure to do that.
I'm sure they're, they're Republicans to these, so they're, I mean, I'm sure that's public knowledge, right? Anybody could go up and get a, a digest point, you know, we.
Yeah, we just, we just need to, we need to get back into the formal procedure that's outlined in the contract, but we've not done for the last couple of years.
I see no problem. Anybody else?
For council comment?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, Shannon and I attended the L G C C A meeting at Henderson County. On, on. January seventeenth and Hendersonville City is introducing parking meters. And they'll be on Main Street and in the new parking garages, you have to have permits. And they'll have several new parking areas open, the Dogwood Parking Lot. And there was a couple others. Um, they're still gonna have some free parking, but they will be off of Main Street. And you'll have to do a little bit of walking. But that's gonna take effect March first. So as of March first, you'll need to take change to account.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second? All those in paper?
Uh.
Thank you.